All right, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, exactly. Welcome to the Community Commission meeting for March 2, 2022. We're going to go ahead and get started here. For those of you that came into the audience, there was an agenda out on the table that I think you might have missed. So we can go ahead and get that, give you a second to take a look at that. And then we'll go ahead and go over a couple of the items that are on there. For those of you watching at home, there's plenty of space here to come in. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on with some new business for the Traffic and Transportation Commission. And please know that for those of you in the audience, I'm not hiding from you. I just can't see you from here, so occasionally I'll peek over. So the first option was for a nomination for vice chair, but with only one regular, I think only one regular member here unless, have the other of you, either of you been here before?
No.
Okay. The last time? Okay. Happy to take the nominations for vice chair. April Darling has altered her schedule a little bit because she's helping out with our Citizens Police Academy, so she gets to be a participant in that tomorrow night. So she had to arrange her schedule. If not, we can always come back for vice chair at our next meeting. Do I have any nominations? All right, we'll come, we'll come back to that the next time. So we'll start talking about the 2022 road program first, so that way everybody's kind of familiar. Right now, we're still waiting on some engineering information back from EMHNT to kind of verify what some of the prices would be in the estimates before we send it out to bid in the next couple of weeks. Some of the roads include Canada and Cuthbert Court, Taylor Road Southwest, which would be the area basically from just on the borderline of Etna Township all the way to the 256 corridor. We also have Rygate Drive and Court. We have Crofton Place, Crofton Circle, Crofton Court. And Hillridge Road are things that are on schedule, including another couple of options. And this depends on the pricing that's coming up. Obviously, the price of oil is, shall we say, fluctuated recently with world events. So we're going to have to wait and see exactly how much that comes in. But the roads, Roundelay Road East, Nocturne Road East, Carousel Drive East, and Ada Drive are possible ones as well. I don't believe all of them are alternates. I think a couple of them are on there. But hopefully, we'll have that information in the next few weeks. The roads are typically determined by a couple of different factors. One is basically the quality of the roads themselves. And then some of them are also dealt with to make sure that, you know, specific areas that have had more problems, either with stormwater retention or something along those lines, are addressed as well. We are also still in the process of kind of building out our schedules. So we hope to have something when our new website goes live in June, to have probably at minimum a three-year list of what roads will be taking care of for the next three years. We'd love to extend that to five, but it just depends. And all of this is kind of a flip a coin on when we get some additional federal dollars from the American Infrastructure Acts that are coming out there. We know that the city of Reynoldsburg will be getting some. We just don't know when. And if it doesn't come in enough, early enough for the, for the bid process, then that, those funds will then be used and we'll have a even more robust program for next year. So stay tuned for that. Hopefully, to have that on council's agenda by the 14th or the 28th of March. So any questions about the road program? You don't all have to speak at one. Okay, that's fine. So that'll be up there, and we'll get that out. The next topic is the excessive speeding issues procedure, also kind of followed along with the most recent concerns about speeding and the potential for speed bumps, humps, or tables. And just for future reference, anything that I refer to as this, they are speed tables, but I'm nine times out of 10, I'm going to say speed bumps just because I'm used to it. So that's there. So I'm going to kind of give a little bit of a history on that particular situation. And then if the two members in the audience are here, I do have a couple of pictures of where the potential speed tables would go, that I'll get those out to you in a minute.
Mayor?
Yep. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
Are you saying speed tables or speed humps?
Speed tables. Yeah, they're actually.
Now, the tables are usually.
They're a little bit bigger than the other ones. I don't have the, the schematics in there, but they're not your traditional bumps. They're probably halfway in between a, a traditional table that you might see in the city of Columbus.
Speed humps are usually six, seven feet, eight feet.
Yeah, it's a little, then that's the terminology for it.
Are they going to be the recycled rubber?
As of right now, that's going to be up to council. We're going to provide both options for it. There's pros and cons to each of those things. And a lot of it just depends on, again, what council decides to do with and the feedback from community members.
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, and that's exactly, we've had a couple of people say that. I know they've reached out, so that, that's good that, that's there. So I would say, really, two years ago, probably about 20 minutes after I got into office, I did have a number of calls from residents on Priestley and in the surrounding areas that were explaining, complaining about any number of issues from excessive speeds to running stop signs and then providing history for the area in general. Previous councils allegedly had said that Dickens would never be opened up, and then obviously it was. And Priestley from Wagner to the, just past Corey Park are, they're narrow roads, more narrow than traditional suburban roads that are out there. And so therefore, it has been a problem for a number of years. I know that they switched to one side of street parking, but that has not resolved the issue. So at that point in time, the homeowners association that's associated with the majority of those homes, as well as residents, came in to discuss the issue. They created a petition, and they went out, and I can't recall what month it was, but it was nice enough that they went out. So it would have been probably late summer last year where they went out to get signatures for support. And for the most part, it was relatively overwhelming in terms of their support for having some sort of speed alteration there. Again, at that point, it was a question of whether it was humps, bumps, or tables. And so at that point in time, we went ahead and engaged with our engineers, EMHNT, and we tried to cross-reference the list of where they would be located with, with those that signed the petition and checked a box to say that they were okay with a particular location of that. And then just a few weeks ago, I sent out letters to those addresses that were in the general vicinity of where those things would be located, asking for feedback. If you're interested, please let us know. If you don't want them there, please let us know. We did get a couple of phone calls and a couple of emails. And so we've made a few adjustments based on the addresses. But if there's anyone else here that would like to provide an address, if this would be your time, if you want to say where you would prefer to have them, especially if they were put in your house and you don't want them there, let us know so we can make any kind of adjustments at this time. So if you would like to, is that what you were looking to do?
I want a completely different neighborhood.
Oh, a completely different, oh.
Yes, that's what I'm here for.
Okay, all right. Well, then we'll, we'll get to you in a, I'm sorry, I thought you were, all right. No, no problem.
I want a completely different neighborhood.
All right.
I was emailing, I believe, Brent.
Okay, all right. All right, so that's good. So for Priestley Road, that's kind of where we're at from there. Do we have some, yeah, if you, if you have comments about it, please come on down to the microphone. I promise the camera is kind.
Hi, my name is Connor Heckman, and I live in Corey Park. And I think my husband sent an email to the mayor. Because our property is one of the ones that was chosen to get one of those speed bumps. So we just want to let, I mean, I know he responded to say that.
Off the list. Yep, it's not going to be there.
Right, it's not going to be there. But also too, we just, I wanted to come to this meeting just to kind of give alternative. And I know that this is not the meeting to make any decisions. I think you guys have in a different meeting.
Yeah, that'll be at a council meeting, probably like with the roads program sometime in March.
Right, so I mean, I just wanted to kind of, you know, say real quickly that, you know, instead of this speed bump, if we can just try other things, like maybe lowering the speed limit?
We're, we're not allowed to by law.
Oh, okay.
We try, no, and this, this, by all means, let us know so we can let, but yeah, we did have that conversation because that was actually one of my thoughts. We thought of lowering the speed limit. We thought of increasing fines as well. So by all means, continue.
Okay, so if, I mean, if we could like try, because I mean, these houses are not like, you know, cheap houses that we have back there. They are like very expensive houses. Unfortunately, we share the street with the older neighborhood. And they have a lot of people coming from those neighborhoods, a lot of kids or whatever, that speed down that's Priestley or even Corey Park. So my thought was, okay, why can't we just try maybe something temporary and see how it goes first, before you put a permanent speed bump there? Also, like you were saying, maybe you guys can now lower the speed limit, but that would be something you can do. And then also too, maybe instead of like a yield sign, we can put like a stop sign to where we have yield, you know, a yield sign somewhere, we can put a stop sign.
Trying to think, is there?
I think there's one.
Why is the stop sign on Priestley and they don't stop?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, that's on Priestley, there's a stop sign there.
I think, is it the yield sign on Windriff? Is you're coming on Windriff to onto Priestley?
Yeah, I think there's a.
No, it's.
So a stop sign, okay. But we have one like coming from Sand Rock to Corey Park. And I don't know what are those other streets like, because I kind of live over Sand Rock and Marble Park. My house is way in the corner. But we don't get a lot of traffic there. And I know they're going to stand the road with the new development coming back there. So, but there's a yield sign there. So I'm just saying, instead of yield sign, they can put like the stop sign. But the biggest thing for me is that, hey, we just need to try a temporary structure instead of putting a permanent structure there. Because, I mean, like I said, these houses are not like the cheapest houses or whatever. This is a very nice neighborhood. Unfortunately, we share Corey, Priestley with the older neighborhoods that have a lot of people coming from that way, and most of them are speeding. So that's an issue that we have. But I'm, I'm just suggesting that if you can put it in your report for the next meeting, that let's try that instead of putting something so permanent. And then find out later that. And then too, I just want to kind of address like even with the petition that was sent out. If I wasn't really going to be home, I would not have even known about that petition. Fortunately for me, I was home, but the person that did the petition, when he came to my house, he told me that it was already passed, that he just wanted my signature. So it didn't really matter whether I signed it or not. And so I told him, I said, but why are you even coming to my door if it's already passed? If it's already been done, then why do you need my signature? Or I just need your signature. Which, I kind of felt like it was kind of misleading because, okay, I live in this neighborhood. I've been here for 19 years, 20 years. And so you're telling me something is already passed, but you're coming for my signature. So I, I was one of the people that refused to sign it because I'm like, I don't like it, I don't, you know. However, if the rest of the neighborhood liked it, that's fine. But, you know, to think that a petition is a vote, it's not a vote. You know, I didn't vote for it. But when he told me that it was already passed, that he didn't really need my signature, but he just, he just needed it because, hey, just for the heck of it, I'm like, okay. So anyway, so that's just why I wanted to come to this meeting, to address my, my concern and to conclude, if we can just try a temporary thing and see how it goes. Thank you for giving me the chance.
Oh, you're welcome. So just to kind of let everybody know what the process is from here, you know, assuming that there are no other changes based on the letters that were sent out about the temporary, about the probable locations for these things. Once we have identified those, then we're going to send a letter to everybody in the entire neighborhood. And we're going to let everybody in the entire neighborhood know exactly where they would go if council passes it. And then we will let them know when it's going to be at council. And then that's when they can come in and actually have the public commentary at that point, so they can show their support or otherwise for that thing. I did talk to, you know, a number of members of the community in the past, that there are issues with speed bumps. Not only are there environmental issues, there's issues with streets and safety, there are issues with, you know, the drivability of it, there's, you know, the aesthetic quality of them, there's a number of issues that go on. And then ultimately, the reality is the uncertainty of whether or not they are or are not going to work. So those are all things that are there. And one of the questions that I posed to the, to a majority of the people that were here that night was, they've been calling for a couple of different options. One is to close down Dickens, which is not going to happen. One is to close down Priestley at the area at the break, which is not going to happen. Police officers on 24 hours a day, seven days a week is not a viable option either. So if these speed bumps come in and they do not work, there are very limited options after that. A lot of this is, you know, dealt with, you know, individual behavior. I will say that while it may seem that residents who are on the older side of Priestley are the ones doing the speeding, the data that has been provided to me by the police department does not necessarily match that. It is one of those things where I think everybody always thinks everyone else is speeding, and they'll never do it until they get a ticket and say, well, now I got a ticket. But I, normally, I don't do this. So speeding is something that goes throughout all. But that's why we're going to have these public meetings. That's why we're going to ask for input. Because while they may have said that, and I, I had no idea, this is the first time I'd ever heard of something like that, they were not something that is guaranteed to happen. Council has the ultimate say on that. So that's why we're providing this information for residents to make their voice heard. And council's going to decide one way or another based on the community feedback.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Have we checked into the cost of temporaries?
Yeah, we're getting that, we're getting that information based on some of the stuff that Ken Kowalski has. I know it's less than, obviously, less than the actual physical things. The question is whether or not it's a durable issue, not a durable issue, how long they would last, things of that nature. And then there's the philosophy of that if speed bumps are something that is wanted by the residents in the area, are we spending bad money after good in the purpose of if we put the temporary ones out there, that's X amount of dollars, and then removing them and putting in permanent fixtures later, that there's a cost measure, that again, council's ultimately going to have the decision on.
I was just thinking if, you know, the temporaries worked or didn't work, either way, and you removed them, whether you replaced them with permanents or, but then you could maybe move them to another area and use those, reuse them to test them in other areas to see if they.
The nice thing about the recycled rubber, obviously, I think they are, it gets all the people that want to use it. So that's what the issue for us, the issue for us, and they were, you know, they don't have to go that far down, you can go over that.
I believe that the, from what I've seen based on the estimate, that they are this recycled rubble material. Just, we haven't gotten that back from them because it's coming with the rest of the roads program stuff. But though, council's going to have it, it's going to be what they would call a, you know, an alternate bid for this particular thing. So that way, you know, it's, council's going to be able to pass the roads program in general, and then it's not going to be held up by this one particular thing. So they'll have the option to decide, you know, do they go there at all? And if they go there, are they permanent or are they temporary? And so those are the options that I'm going to be presenting to council. All right, so the process from here moving on is kind of like, you know, you mentioned the stop light, or stop signs that have the lights on it, and that was one of the options to help. And obviously, we know that if people weren't going to stop before, they weren't going to stop from the flashing, but it is, you know, a progression to go through. Maybe it does help a little bit, maybe it doesn't all the way across, but these are just kind of the process going through. However, if there are other areas, before, you know, we get to it, if there are other areas that are of concern, we're speeding. And one of the common roads that I hear is Bryce Road north of Main Street. That's, that's number two on the list, followed by, you know, you've got First Gate, you've got Kingsley as well, there are a couple of other ones. So there's going to be a process that goes through it. So the first step is obviously letting the city know that these are the issues. And then we have to do some data gathering. This is where you put in, one, you do, you know, some enforcement opportunities, you put in the flashing, you know, the, your speed here indicators. And then you put the, I guess you could say, the dummy ones that actually just take the speeds themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, but, you know, to, to create that data point. And then at that point in time, that's when you do what the next step is. Are there options as far as changing the configuration of some of the, some of the curbs and gutters where you put abutments out to kind of slow down or direct traffic? Do you limit parking on one side? Do you go to that next level ultimately, which the final course is, of course, the speed bumps themselves? So there is a process to go through all of that. Obviously, you know, the more people that are participating in that, the better. So, so you said Bryce Road north of Main is the area that you're referring to, then?
Yeah, I live right on Bryce Road, last house before.
Okay. Yeah, if you could, just so that way, I want to make sure everybody, everybody at home, you know, I'm sure we have a crowd of tens that are watching, and so I want to make sure they hear it.
As big as it is an issue on Facebook, I thought there'd actually be more people here. But anyways, no, I'm on Bryce Road, I'm right before Regosa. And from Rosedale to Regosa, it's like a drag strip. We are a cut-through street. We have called the police on multiple occasions. I have sat down with the chief of police or with a couple sergeants. I've been to the police station on multiple occasions. We've had the speed signs put out, we've had the police there. I've seen children almost hit, I've seen adults almost run over, I've seen cars, parked cars hit because people fly down. We don't even call to complain for people going 35 into 25 any longer. We call when people fly down a road at 50 miles an hour. I've been told by police that they just don't have enough traffic units to be out there on a regular basis. I've been told by police that because we are on the edge of the city, that we are not their top priority, which is very, that was very hurtful to hear it from an officer. And I did address it with the police department because we pay city taxes as well. I have three small children of my own. All my neighbors have kids, we're afraid to let our children play outside, especially in the front yards, because people just fly down the road. It's, I'm happy to do whatever. If I need to go knock on doors, whatever I need to do, please tell me. I will do it to get something done, to make change happen. We've been there for three years now, and it has gotten progressively worse over those three years.
It's very similar, the story sounds very similar to what I've heard with what Priestley is over the time. So hopefully, you know, I think Priestley's been dealing with this for 15 years, so hopefully we'll.
Yeah, we've only been there three, and we're at the point where we want to move, it's gotten that bad. We no longer want to live where we're at. The response we've got from Reynoldsburg Police Department, we no longer want to live in Reynoldsburg from the response we've got and the lack of care that has occurred on our street.
Well, that's something that, you know, I know you said you addressed it, but I'll address that with the chief myself.
And we haven't seen an officer in probably six months on our street.
Okay. I will, that's an easy enough thing to address with them. I do want to make sure that before you leave, that you just speak with Drew, my intern, the only other guy wearing a suit in the building. Just make sure you get name contact information, so that way we can get you added to a list so we can.
Yeah, definitely. I'm happy to go door-to-door knocking if I need to. It's just, my neighbors were unable to come tonight with me. I told them I was coming down here. I knew it had nothing to do with our neighborhood, but we wanted to at least start the process since this is what we'd like to occur in our neighborhood. And changing it to one-side parking won't do any good because it's a very wide street where we're at.
Yeah, your, your street is significantly different than what Priestley is. Priestley in that area is, oh gosh, what is it, 16 feet or something like that?
Yeah, some of our side streets are like that, and they still try to speed through there. But I mean, we've had parked cars, even with that wide, they blow through the stop sign and hit the parked car. So, you know, the speeding on the stop sign, the stop sign's just like, oh, who cares?
Yeah. No, that's definitely something that's there that we can kind of, we'll, we'll work with that, and I'll get in contact with you as soon as tomorrow really to start setting up what the process would be.
Yeah, that would be great.
Fine, and I'll have to get, take some, it'll take a few days to get for me the most recent data, but we want to make sure that we get, you know, continuous updated data so we can chart it. Because what we ended up doing with Priestley is, I think we had three rounds of data that came out, and I think they were, you know, a couple of weeks here, a couple of weeks there, but it was spread out enough to actually see what it, what the actual rates were. But no, Bryce, like I said, the Bryce Road north of Main is the one that I know of that comes in number two as far as the most well-traveled road.
It's the cut-through streets, because I know Rosehill is a big issue as well. Rosehill's 35, and people fly down. I mean, in my neighborhood, I go 20 miles an hour on purpose just to slow people down. And I've, my mother-in-law in her vehicle was chased by another person, honking, screaming, tailgating her all the way down the road. My husband had to go down after her to make sure she was safe. I've been passed on my street. It's, it's ridiculous.
The same things that you're talking about is what we've gone through over on the Priestley issues. And Chris and one of our other neighbors actually did the walking and stuff following the mayor's guidance.
Yeah, I'm happy too. That's why, that's why I'm here tonight, to see what I need to do to make change happen. I know this is not my neighborhood this particular meeting was about, but I figured I could get everything I needed from it.
That's why we're here.
Yes.
That's why, that's why we're doing this.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you very much. Please make sure you get all your contact information to Drew in the back, just so that way we can get you, you know, get this process started.
Will do, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, I know we have another member of the audience. If you have any comments, anything you want to share, I just, I don't, I don't want to move on to the roundabouts because that can be its own, that can be its own conversation.
I mean, the only thing I want to say about the speed, the other day, going 45 miles an hour.
That on Bryce Road too.
Come to the mic.
Sorry, it's not just, it also.
I, I understand. I've heard those things as well.
So there's been some talk online about it being a perceived issue and not necessarily a real issue. And the only data point they have is for Priestley, where, you know, there's a curve and all that kind of stuff on Priestley. But for like Corey Park and stuff, it's a straight, it's a straight drive-through. So they, they go quite fast on Corey Park and, and.
And on the map, Chris, you'll notice that there is.
Oh, yeah.
Speed bump planned for each of the streets, so to address all of our community there. But that was one of our, our main issues, to get those installed.
Especially when they connect the new neighborhood to.
That's going to be even more so with the traffic.
And that's one of the things that, you know, that obviously, I know the frustration that the community has felt is just the, I don't want to call it a lack of response, but the, just the, the time it has taken to get a process started with it. And so, you know, again, people, ask 10 people, and you're going to get five people that say they don't have a problem with speed bumps, and you're going to get five people that say they are. However, that being said, you know, just for those of you that are unaware, I actually was hit by a car when I was riding my bicycle in Strawberry Farms way back in a day long ago because people were speeding through. And they ended up actually putting speed bumps in that area. The last time I drove through, which again, was a while ago, they still were there. I didn't get to autograph them or anything. You'd think I would have been able to, but, oh, well. But the reality is, you know, the speed bumps are, is that something that is going to, you know, does it save, you know, like you mentioned about, does it save the life of a child? Does that slow people down even just enough? Even if it's not necessarily, you know, some people are probably still going to speed, they're still going to fly through it. Or what will most likely also happen is these speeders will then be pushed to alternate routes. So while Priestley may necessarily benefit from this, maybe they go into a different angle or something like that. However, that being said, you know, we want to be responsive to our community members, and these are your concerns. You guys live on these streets on a regular basis. And while I do travel them frequently, I don't live there. So we want to make sure that we do what we can to help, help out and find some sort of a solution to these issues.
Even if it slows down half of them, that's way better than what we've got right now.
I, I don't disagree, so.
Slows down the ones doing it.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, any other questions, comments as far as the procedures or issues specifically to Bryce and Bryce Road or anything for Priestley?
I think in reviewing some of the email responses that were negative towards speed bumps, a couple of them mentioned things about lowering of the property values or other things. And just as you were saying, ma'am, you want to move out because you don't have the safety. And so I tend to not think in that same grain. I think if you have a community where children are safe, children can play, and, and you don't have that fear, I think the property value actually increases because you're slowing slowing the traffic down just going through there, and so I may have a different perspective about safety for our, the value of our homes.
Well, I think at one point right now, especially with the housing market the way it is, and the lack of housing, be it affordable or otherwise, in Reynoldsburg or in central Ohio in general, plus with the, the coming of the Mammoth Intel installation that's just 10 miles away from us, that will most certainly, you know, continue to increase the property values, and we want to make sure that we do what we can with it. But I think the most important thing is, one, that we are listening, we are going to have these conversations, and we are going to be bringing it before council, and so council, as much as I'd like to think that I have, you know, the ability to do everything, it's, you know, they got to, they got to sign the checks, so I want to make sure we make that, that concern known to them, so they're aware of it as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next topic, or you got another one?
No, you got to be able to count to four.
Yep. Next one, everybody's favorite, roundabouts. So we've had discussions last year about a potential roundabout at the intersection of 256, commonly known as the five-way, and if speed bumps were not divisive enough, I'm sure everyone will come to a consensus on the need of a roundabout in Reynoldsburg. So the, the current status is, based on some of the conversations we've had with our engineering firm, that the next available opportunity for safety funds to be used for a project like this would be in 2025. However, the process that we need to go about, if we were to go in that direction, actually has to start much sooner. So we will actually be doing some things this year, including probably two, maybe three potential public meetings, so we will get that word out, so you'll see some signage and displays out in the five-way intersection to talk about that. We'll have some engineers who are much more professional about it to provide a little bit more context to things, and then from there, we'll be going to an actual safety study to see the viability of, if it qualifies for some of the safety funds that are out there. I would like to think it does, however, that being said, I don't know for sure, I don't want to say yes it does. One of the only advantages of it, if we, the city does decide to go in the direction of a roundabout at the five-way, is the funds would actually be through safety funds, and a majority of them would be paid for someone else other than City of Reynoldsburg, and from my point of view, that's always a benefit. That being said, you know, for as much public comment as we want about speed bumps, the same thing would, would hold true for any kind of a roundabout, because the five-way intersection presents a unique challenge, it's not just a, I guess you'd say, a four-pronged event, it is a five-pronged event, which means that you're looking at a different shape, you're looking at multiple lanes, you're looking at a difference between head-on collisions versus side-swipe collisions, and all of those other things that would entail those issues, which again, is why we need to have as many public meetings as possible, and information for community members to respond to that. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Luzater and Fred, if you guys want to talk and have any commentary on that issue, I'd be happy to listen and kind of go from there.
Well, I just know, and, and I was the one that actually brought this up in our first meetings. Originally, there were two designs for a roundabout at 256 in Livingston, the five-point. One was your traditional straight circle roundabout, and the other one was one that I refer to as a peanut shape. I'm not sure which one would be the most feasible, it's for the engineers and the safety people to decide. I myself, I love roundabouts, but then again, I'm, I'm a traffic guy, I worked for the street department for almost 35 years. They move traffic, there's a lot, a less major collisions in roundabouts. The first six months, will you have more side-impact accidents, probably, but they, they won't be major, and you'll have a lot less injuries in a roundabout than what you do in a regular straight T-intersection, or in this case, a five-way intersection. As the mayor said, you don't have the, the head-on collisions, you do still have rear-end collisions, you have side-impact collisions, but you don't have the head-on collisions that we have down there now, because there will be people coming off of 256 to go straight or turn onto Livingston, and people will come off of Graham Road and head-on. So, but like, again, like the mayor said, we want input from the public to see if it's even feasible, whether the people of Reynoldsburg would embrace the possibility of a roundabout there, so hopefully, we can get quite a few people to come to the meetings.
Oh, something tells me that one will be very well-attended, just, just a guess.
I believe the closest example of, if anyone wants to actually experience several roundabouts, is on Reynoldsburg New Albany Road, going into Gehenna, going up Hamilton Road, and other ones where they're not a full T, like 62 is at an angle, so it could be somewhat of a comparison to our five-way. And so, designing the entrance into the roundabout, also, instead of being a straight-in, having a, like a turn-in, tends to have the vehicles not only slow, but then they're going into the traffic flow, and being two lanes versus a single lane, obviously, you need a little more room, but the, the flow of traffic tends to go a lot faster, and especially if, if you're doing, going home or going to work time, and trying to get into those roundabouts, the traffic tends to flow a lot faster than if you had cars backing up like we do on Graham Road or Livingston.
Yeah, and that's the other thing that somebody did mention, is the impact on how Graham Road moving towards 256, moving towards 70, how that would, how that would be impacted. So those are things that people who are significantly smarter than I am will come up with traffic models on all of that, but I know that that's, that is an odd one, because it's, you know, does the traffic get stacked in there if, depending on how the flow is coming in from, you know, the Livingston to Lancaster to Graham, so that's going to be an interesting thing to see how that develops.
And I think the lighter side is Slate Ridge, is, is, I don't want to say it next to nothing, but it would tend to be more of a Reynoldsburg, New Albany, and Graham would be the heaviest of the traffic, so you may have, you really don't have a five-way heavy congestion.
It's a little bit more-
Yeah.
Now, the other interesting thing is, while I'm all in favor of trying to find ways to prohibit semi-trucks from traveling in Reynoldsburg in general, the question would then be, you know, how do semis navigate something like that, and are there going to be other restrictions in place? Again, things that engineers are going to be able to answer much more than I am, but those are kind of interesting things. You know, I've had some preliminary conversations with the, the chief sharps over at the fire department about, you know, the speed bump speed tables as well as this particular thing, so I know that there's a lot of, a lot of players involved in this particular thing, so it, but it is something that I think that we'll continue to have a couple of public meetings on, that will be very well-advertised, well in advance, and again, it'll be much, when the weather is much warmer out, so we can get that information out there for people to have those conversations, and then bring in some engineers and go over some of those types of things, and then talk about the process from there, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments about, and I think if you want to go ahead and see what, I think there's a five-way intersections in, is it Valaparaiso or Terre Hoyt in Indiana? Do you remember, Drew?
I remember.
Yeah, so if you want to, it's a Terre Hoyt, I think that's one of the only other five-ways. We, we reached out to them, and we did finally get in touch with them last year, and like Mr. Luzater said, the first six months are the worst, and then it gets significantly better, but it's just getting through that first six months when everybody's trying to learn how to navigate a complex five-way like that, so. But I look forward to it, and again, the discussions are good, that's why, that's why we're here, and we're going to continue to move on to find ways to make our city a little bit better. Any other comments from any old business, anything that we need to go over from the past?
I don't think so.
All right. All right, with that, any comments, any other comments from the audience? All right, so we'll go ahead and close the Traffic and Transportation Commission. For those of you waiting patiently for the Military Recognition Commission, there is no meeting for that tonight. We are still waiting for the design sketches of our monument structures that we are looking to install at Memorial Plaza. That includes a POW MIA monument structure, as well as a Purple Heart structure. For those of you that might not know, Reynoldsburg is actually a sponsor city for each of those individual options, so we're going to have some monument structures put out at Memorial Plaza as soon as we can get those designs in, and they are constructed, so we're looking forward to that. Our next meeting is March 17th at 7:00 PM. This is going to be with the Arts Commission, Beautification and Welcoming and Diversity. I'm going to give you a sneak peek, a sneak peek of the arts program. The arts is going to be talking about a new program where we will have sponsored signal boxes that are going to be painted in various areas, or not painted, they're going to be vinyl wrapped, in specific areas around Reynoldsburg. Four will be sponsored by the school district, and four will come out to the general public to go ahead and put that information out there, so we can bring a little bit more, you know, some, a little bit more art quality into our community. We're going to start small with the eight, and then if we get some positive feedback and things of that nature, we may expand it in future years. Beautification will be our continuation of the Adopt a Road program, as well as a lot